To welcome you and call to order the May tenth, two thousand and sixteen, Port Orchard City Council regular meeting. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any proposed amendments to the published agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I want to move something off the consent agenda. Do I do that now?
I think you should do that now.
Oh, thank you. Then I would move to move consent agenda item G, and it would become business item seven H.
Second. Okay. That's the step conversions. Okay. To business. So we have a motion, a second. Any discussion of that? All in favor of moving item, consent item four G to business item seven H? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Any other amendments to the business, to the agenda? Motion?
I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. We are to citizen comments. Anyone is welcome to speak for three minutes on any of the items that are on our agenda. Does anyone wish to provide public comment?
I'm sorry, Mayor, but I believe I heard a motion for the main agenda, but I didn't hear a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
We, our new agenda format asks for citizens' comments before the approval. So, so Mr. Lucas, do you have a comment on something on the agenda this evening?
Yes, sir. My name is Patrick Lucas. I reside at two, three, two Goldenrod Street in Port Orchard. On the agenda, you talk about a little bit of everything. You talk about the storm drains and stuff like that. You talk, and you've had meetings on that. You talk about the level of service, which is the roads and that too, which is on there. And what I was wanting to say is, is real simple. I lived here on Goldenrod Street in the seventies, and I've seen mayors and city council people come and go, many, and I've asked them all the same question. If we got to, if we got people or kids walking in the streets catching, to catch a school bus, which there's many of them there, and we have several now in fill developments that were put in, how come the money isn't being spent? If it's being used for Collector Street for the houses, how come money isn't being spent for sidewalks and widened road like it's supposed to be? For the comp plan and, which is on the agenda, remind you, Mayor. And the codes. Is there any questions to what I just asked?
Well, Mr. Lucas, this isn't a public question period. It's the public comment period, and we appreciate your comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, and you have a good evening.
Okay. Any one else? Yes. Mr. Wilton.
My comment is regarding item seven E, the contract with Tucci and Sons for the Bethel repave. This is a lot of money just put into a parking lot. We're doing nothing to improve traffic flow, only so people can sit in a more comfortable spot without hitting a chuck hole. I think paving, fixing chuck holes should be a primary until we actually have a reason to spend eight hundred thousand dollars on Bethel. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wish to comment on anything on this evening's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none? Consent agenda is approved. We are on to the fun part of the evening. We've got some certificates here I'd like to present. We have two groups here this evening. We have members of Cub Scout Pack forty-five, twenty-two, and members of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. And these groups have been doing service projects in our community for, I'm told, over ten years. And pleased to present these certificates for work performed on a day of service on April twenty-third at Van Zee and McCormick Village Park. And on a Saturday, they spread eighty yards of gravel to enhance road access to one of the parks, cleaned down and broken limbs, spread beauty bark, raked a very large section of the commons area of the future grass planting at McCormick Village Park, and cleaned up debris. So I'd like to thank you and the members of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, as well as the members of Cub Scout Pack forty-five, twenty-two, for your continued hard work and dedication to our community. So I thought at this time, if the council would join me, maybe out front, I bet these folks would maybe like to have a picture with us, and they'll present these certificates. How about the members of the Cub Scouts first? Okay. We guys want to turn around? Maybe you guys want to step back a little bit? Or we'll step up? Thank you, gentlemen. You get the members of the church? Come on up. About to have a picture with us. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. You get the members of the church? Come on up. About to have a picture with us. Good thing I didn't wear shirts. Because normally you just wear a shirt. All right. All right. You're welcome to stay if you'd like. Got exciting stuff going on here. All right, we are on to our business items. Business item seven A, which is adoption of an ordinance establishing a biennial budget beginning January two thousand and seventeen for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen budget biennium. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Petonsoo, members of the Port Orchard City Council, citizens of Port Orchard. Over the past several budget cycles, the Council Finance Committee discussed the pros and cons of moving to a biennial budget. The committee subsequently recommended the biennial budget be discussed at a work-study session. The outcome of that conversation was to move forward with a biennial budget written in two thousand and sixteen for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen budget biennium. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Petonsoo, members of the Port Orchard City Council, citizens of Port Orchard. Over the past several budget cycles, the Council Finance Committee discussed the pros and cons of moving to a biennial budget. The committee subsequently recommended the biennial budget be discussed at a work-study session. The outcome of that conversation was to move forward with a biennial budget written in two thousand and sixteen for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen budget years. In order to begin budgeting on a biennial basis, the city council is required to pass an ordinance six months prior to the beginning of the fiscal year stating its intent. This ordinance establishes a biennial budget beginning January first, two thousand and seventeen for the next biennial budget. The ordinance provides for a mid-biennial review and modification to start no sooner than September first, two thousand and seventeen, and be completed by the end of the year. The review requires a public hearing, which meets the council's priority of strong budget oversight. And in the ordinance itself, it has two sections, one authorizing the biennial budget, the second does lay out the review portion. So the recommendation is to establish a biennial budget beginning January first, two thousand and seventeen for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen budget biennium. Thank you.
Mr. Claussen would like to take a brief recess. It's his car alarm going off.
I'll make the motion to approve, and then I'll go check.
Okay. And Mr. Wiley, you're more than welcome to stay all evening, but we already approved your item.
Oh, good. I'm glad I got here in time. That's a Ford pickup, one fifty, right in front of the, oh, but it's not mine.
This is a black one.
Yeah.
I can't imagine whose car that was.
Thank you.
So Mr. Claussen made a motion to approve the biennial budget. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Charlie made a second. Is there discussion of this item? Bearing none, we will be voting to approve an ordinance establishing a biennial budget beginning January two thousand and seventeen for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen budget biennium and all subsequent budgets. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries.
Thank you.
And we are on to seven B, which is adoption of a resolution indicating the city council's intent to hold a public hearing for the proposed assumption of the rights, powers, open the page here, functions, and obligations of the Port Orchard Transportation Benefit District. Mr. Martin.
Thank you. Legislation passed last summer allows the city council may assume all rights, powers, and responsibility of the Transportation Benefit District, thereby eliminating the TBD Board as a separate entity. The city council, at its April nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen work-study, contemplated the benefits of consolidation and directed staff to prepare a resolution stating its intent and setting a public hearing on the proposed absorption and assumption of the TBD. The process of assumption is fairly straightforward. The council must first adopt a resolution setting a date and time for a public hearing regarding the council's intent to assume the TBD. The attached resolution before you denied is for this purpose. The city is required to publish the public hearing notice at least twice in the two weeks prior to the public hearing date, which is scheduled on June fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at City Hall. Following the conclusion of the public hearing, the council may pass an ordinance declaring its determination that it is in the best interest and welfare of the public for the city to assume the rights, powers, functions, and obligations of the TBD. The council does not have to wait for assumption of the TBD to take action on the vehicle license fee. Sitting as the TBD Board, the council, which is currently the board, could pass a vehicle license fee. Such an action and fee would then transfer to the city upon assumption of the TBD. The recommendation is, the resolution is brought forward as directed at the April nineteenth work session. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a resolution indicating the city council's intent to hold a public hearing on June fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, on the proposed assumption of the rights, powers, functions, and obligations of the Port Orchard Transportation Benefit District.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion of this item? Seeing none, you'll be voting on a, to approve a resolution for the city council to assume the rights and obligations of the Port Orchard Transportation Benefit District. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. We are on to seven C, which is adoption of a resolution renaming the ball field and naming the, a small driveway to honor the late Art Michelson. Carla Krainerson.
So on November twenty-seventh, nineteen seventy-eight, council renamed the portion of the Givens Field used by the South Kits Up Western Little League to Art Michelson Little League Field. Mr. Bob Showers, President of the South Kits Up Western Little League, contacted the city in April to ask to rename the Little League Field behind Givens Community Center from Art Michelson Little League Field to Art Michelson Memorial Little League Field. In addition, he has asked that the small unnamed driveway behind Givens Community Center to be named Art Michelson Lane. This is in honor of Mr. Michelson, who had passed away on August thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. This was brought before the Land Use Committee on April twentieth, and they were supportive of the name change of the field and the driveway, but wanted the Community Development Department to review this request. Code Enforcement Officer has noted that there will be no problems with the renaming of the fields and the driveway. Staff recommends approving the resolution as presented.
Yes, Councilor Ashby.
I would like to make this motion. I move to adopt a resolution renaming and designating the Little League Field behind Givens Community Center from Art Michelson Little League Field to Art Michelson Memorial Little League Field, and naming the small driveway behind Givens Community Center between the center and the ball field, Art Michelson Lane.
Second it.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Claussen.
I think it's rather ironic that Beck and I made the motion and seconded it because I believe that she and I were both active in Western Little League at the time we came to the council and asked to have it named initially, back in nineteen seventy-eight. So it seems appropriate that now we're on this side of the table.
Right, and we did that, we renamed it and signed the lease about the time we hosted the state Little League Field in nineteen seventy-eight, of which South Kits Up Western took second place.
Wow.
Just history.
Be there too, but not as far back as you guys. So we, any other comments this evening? Seeing none, we'll be voting to rename the baseball field and a small driveway in honor of the late Art Michelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, congratulations, Mr. Showers.
Thanks, Bob.
All right, we are on to seven E, or actually, seven D, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Cytel Systems LLC for network design and IT project services. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Petonsoo. In December, Cytel Systems completed a network assessment of the city's technological infrastructure and made recommendations to improve its efficiency, security, and overall performance. A summary of findings was provided that categorized many of the findings from the assessment into broad themes to help set context for the overall report. Assessment findings and recommendations were attached in a separate document, which was provided to the Council Finance Committee, staff, and the mayor. Each section included engineering notes from the onsite assessment and where warranted recommended solutions. Senior staff and the mayor studied the report met with Cytel Systems and sought outside agency input. The city considered implementing outlined upgrades using existing staff. The final determination was to seek a proposal from Cytel for network design and IT project services, updating infrastructure, and to serve as consultant to the city. The proposal is attached to this agenda staff report. Approval of the proposal would result in the first major IT upgrade since completion of the current City Hall. The city's overall reliance on IT infrastructure, which includes technology not available twenty years ago, continues to grow. Approval of the project recognizes the need for up-to-date infrastructure policies and procedures and a changing IT landscape. Cytel will serve as a consultant to the city and direct staff, city staff, in design implementation, provide bid specifications for equipment purposes, purchases, and advise on operational procedures and policy. The project is to be completed by December thirty-first of this year. Staff recommends that council authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Cytel Systems for network design and IT project services. The amount of the contract not to exceed ninety-four thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. I might mention, this does not include the one-time equipment purchases, which are not included in the Cytel agreement, and those are estimated to be approximately sixty-five thousand dollars. The other thing that I'd call your attention to is, in the packet, there is an agreement there. The heading on that is professional services agreement. That's since been changed to the one that will be executed to be called a personal services agreement. The contract is all the same in all form and substance. It was just that we had used the term professional service rather than personal service. So that's what's in my hand here, and that was changed yesterday afternoon. So that's a, a form that follows substance, and the attorney could speak to that. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Donald.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Cytel Systems LLC for network design and IT project services in the amount not to exceed ninety-four thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question, Mr. Charlie?
Just a potential scrivener's err on the motion for consideration, the amount not to exceed ninety-four, four eighty, but the fiscal impact stock in ninety, is that just?
Ninety-three. This says ninety-three. Yeah. Is that, I'll tell you how I got that.
Because I was adding ninety-one thousand and three thousand. It makes ninety-four. But I put that down three. I know how I made that mistake, and I apologize.
Don't worry. Okay. So maybe we had budgeted a thousand dollars, and that's the difference.
He's got a little bit of a cushion.
Other questions? Yes, Mr. Chang.
I'm assuming that we do have the funding for this, which I'm happy that we do. I'm also wondering if there's the funding for the approximately sixty-five thousand in equipment upgrades? Will we be able to do that this year, or do we have to wait for next year?
It's, it's, there's fund balance. Good question. There's fund balance available during the, you may recall, last fall, during the budget discussions, we had a discussion whether or not we'd put a dollar amount into the budget, and we said let, you know, the decision was to wait to see what it cost. So there was adequate funding, because actually, we thought this was going to be somewhat more. So we're, we should be fine with the product we get at a price that is affordable. Originally, we were thinking around two hundred, or I was, from what I was originally hearing, about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
And as we work through this process, initially, we were going to have our staff do some of this work, and the reason we have this agreement is we were expediting this process. We have serious concerns about our servers, and this will enable us to complete all of this work this calendar year and the most critical things in the next ninety days, which will be the putting four of our servers on the cloud, replacing the other four, the Wi-Fi system, and the new email servers, which we all felt were needed to happen sooner versus later. And the rest of the work will be completed before the end of the year.
I'll just tell you a real-world story on, there were several things, they came in and said, you just have to, you should do, you just have to do this now, which we have done. And one of them was to stop the movement of anything that looked like a bank account number, or a social security number, or a credit card number. And it, we've actually had things stop moving because of that filter now that stops that. So looking at securities-type of things, it actually really worked. So I think that we're going to have a good, good upgrade here. I mean, being a treasurer kind of makes you worry if somebody's floating that stuff around, so.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none. We'll be voting on execution of a contract with Cytel Systems LLC for network design and IT product services in amount not to exceed ninety-four thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. All right, we are on to seven E, approval of contract with Tucci and Sons, Inc., for the two thousand and sixteen Bethel Road paving repair project. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Honored Councilmembers. On April first, two thousand and sixteen, the City of Port Orchard Public Works Department advertised a request for proposals, or RFP, within the Port Orchard Independent and the Daily Journal of Commerce, bid schedules A, B, D, and E, as you remember, we did C last year, of the two thousand and sixteen Bethel Road pavement repair project. The city also uploaded the bid documents to the Washington Builders Exchange. By the April twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen deadline, the city received the following bids, all applicable use tax included within the bids. Tucci and Sons was the low bid, total bid of five hundred and eighty-five thousand, eighty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. And then other Puget paving miles of resource, Lakeside Industries, Northwest Asphalt, and Granite Construction ranged to the high bid of nine hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So upon review and verification of references, the city's Public Works Department staff has determined that the Tucci and Sons, Inc., total bid of five eighty-five, eighty-eight point four-five for all schedules was the lowest qualified bid. Additionally, the Public Works Department has confirmed that the bidding requirements for public work was followed and that the project proposal is fully funded within the approved two thousand and sixteen budget. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Tucci and Sons Incorporated for the two thousand and sixteen Bethel Road pavement repair project in an amount not to exceed five hundred and eighty-five thousand, eighty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. And if allowed, I do feel that I'd like to address the comment made during the comment period.
Mr. Claussen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Tucci and Sons Incorporated in an amount not to exceed five hundred and eighty-five thousand, eighty-eight dollars and forty-five cents for the two thousand and sixteen Bethel Road paving repair project.
Second.
Motion is second. Mr. Dorsey, you have a comment?
Yes, I think it's important that the audience understands that, one, you know, the city inherited Bethel Road in a very poor state. We know that. We know that the city, that the county knew that Bethel was going to be annexed, and maintenance within that corridor had been reduced for a number of years. So that's an important factor. I think it's also important to recognize that the city in two thousand and five took on five federal projects that all had respective requirements for completion within a certain timeframe. And with that, the city has had to prioritize certain projects as we are moving through the federal projects, knowing that we will get to the Bethel project. And that's in, and we've talked about that numerous times, and I think we're looking at two thousand and seventeen as being when we're going to design the corridor. But in the meantime, the decision, strategic decision was made to finish Tremont first, finish the Bay Street project, finish Cedar Heights, finish the seawall, and get Bethel to a twenty-year road. Because we were receiving tremendous complaints. We were paying tort claims from vehicles that were losing their oil pans off their cars due to potholes. And so it was a strategic decision to obviously meet our federal demand, but get Bethel into a drivable road surface for at least the next ten to twenty years. And so I think it's important for people to understand that we put seven hundred thousand dollars or whatever into mainly the repairs and the overlay, because the overlay was the area that's not going to change with the Bethel project. And this year, we're doing a small amount more of repair and overlay, and then just grind out. So I just want to make sure the audience understands that we are being thoughtful as to why we're doing this repair project.
Councilman Claussen, you have a comment?
Yeah, Marcus, I was wondering if you could maybe just, high-level description. The audience may not know what Schedule A, B, D, and E stands for. So maybe you could just describe the project.
Right, so when we did the original design, we broke it into different schedules. And the reason we did that was so that depending on funding availability, we would have the ability to accept any or all of the schedules. So last year, so Schedule A is from Fred Meyer to Salmon Berry. Schedule B is from Salmon Berry to the Taco Time. Taco Time to Mitchell was Schedule C, plus the east-west connectors on Lund to Carl Pickle and then front of Safeway. And then D went from Mitchell to, I don't think it's all the way to the, oh, yeah, all the way to the Roundabout. And then E were these wings on Lund. And so with the bids last year, we decided to go with the full overlay, again, because we did the repairs. We know that the channelization isn't going to change on that. So we've done our ADA curb ramp updates at the intersection, the crosswalks, the complete overlay. And in essence, that road is done for the next, you know, thirty, forty years. And then with this work, we'll finish the overlay on E, which is the extensions on Lund to get to the bridge from Carl Pickle to the bridge, and to get from basically where we're in to near Cosmos to the east property, city limits at just east of Starbucks. So that'll be completely overlaid, so that'll just be done. And then with the redesign next year, we'll look at the corridor as a complete street with intersection improvements. And by, with the Tremont being built in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, maybe two thousand and twenty. And by, with the Tremont being built in 2018, 2019, maybe 2020, we'll have the design complete and we'll design the project strategically now with the funding requirements into similar breakdowns. I'm visualizing from SR one-sixty-six Roundabout to, you know, Bethel or to Lincoln is maybe one segment that we'll federally fund after we design it with non-federal money to just build that segment. Then we'll move from basically Taco Time down to Salmonberry with the Roundabout. So we'll have a Roundabout at Lincoln, a Roundabout at Salmonberry, probably a Roundabout at Blueberry. So when we move forward with Bethel, we have to not make the same mistake that we made with Tremont, because the rules have changed. And that is, we have to design this strategically in pieces and build them and federalize them in pieces.
But this five hundred thousand, as it seems they're going to repave what is there out to Sedgwick and down to the Roundabout?
What this will do is do just grind outs from Wendy's to Fred Meyer. It'll do grind outs from Lincoln to one-sixty-six and it'll grind out in repair and overlay from Cosmos to Starbucks and Carl Pickle to the bridge.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Ashby.
What, for the benefit of new council members that were not part of the budget process last year, I'd like to ask the city treasurer to give us a breakdown of where this money's coming, because I believe we're using money for this out of one of our REIT funds that will not be available for this type of project in the future. So this is the last year we can use those monies.
I second that. Very well said. That's right, during the economic downturn, the legislature in its wisdom opened up the use of REIT money, real estate, money collected, real estate excise tax. And of course, that sun sets at the end of this year and that's where we've done the most of our paving. So this is a wise use of the money while it's available. And you're right, Councilman Ashby, thank you.
And additionally, the thought was, in that budget process, we've got to get Bethel serviceable, drivable, and Mark really touched on this, because we need all of our resources or all of our efforts need to go towards Tremont. And major projects like this probably won't be tackled in the next few years.
And I appreciate understanding, Mark, that it's not all going to be an overlay. The overlay is going to be at that Lund-Bethel intersection that we did last year and the rest of the surface will be grind outs.
Correct.
And so it will be smooth, but it won't be as pretty.
Right, we did not, we wanted to make it drivable, but we didn't want to waste money on something that would change within, well within the life of the road section.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chang, do you have a question?
I just wanted to make sure that I would be relaying information accurately. And the situation is that a lot of people will see work going on on Bethel and they'll get very excited. And I think I would want them to know what to expect, that basically we are repairing the surface and we're not doing any widening of Bethel. Would you say that's characterized accurately?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to be, I believe we've programmed in our transportation improvement plan, the redesign of the Bethel Corridor in seventeen and the actual construction for the first segment phase of the Bethel Corridor, I don't even, it's not on our current six-year tip.
It's just that people will see construction and they'll think, great, they're finally fixing Bethel. And we have to set their expectations accordingly, I think.
Right, and that's why I felt like I was compelled to respond, to remind people that, you know, we've had these discussions in the past and that we are tackling it, but, you know, what's the old saying, how do you eat a rhinoceros? It's one bite at a time and this is how we're taking on this rhinoceros.
Councilmember Deener.
So I support the project. Thank you for the history lesson. I think it is a wise use of the REIT that we won't be able to do again. And I think that there's been some thoughtful preparation of the project and I understand the deferred maintenance is even more expensive, so I intend to support it.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll be voting on executing a contract with Tucci and Sons in an amount not to exceed five hundred eighty-five thousand, eighty-eight dollars, forty-five cents for the 2016 Bethel Road repair project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. We are on to seven F, which is a contract with JMG Constructors LLC for the regional decant facility retrofit. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, your honor, council members. Bear with me on this, this got very confusing in the last few days, but we'll get there, trust me. On April first, 2016, the City of Port Orchard Public Works Department advertised a RFP, request for proposal within the Port Orchard Independent and the Daily Journal of Commerce for the regional decant facility retrofit project. The city also uploaded the bid documents to the Washington Builders Exchange. By the April twenty-sixth, 2016 deadline, the city received the following bids, all applicable use tax included within the bids. And again, like I did before, JMG Construction LLC was the low bid at seven hundred and forty-one thousand, seven, seven hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars, sixty-three cents. And the high bid was one point one eight million dollars. So upon review and verification of references, the city's public works staff has determined that JMG Construction Constructors LLC's total bid of seven forty-one, seven forty-one, point six-three was the lowest qualified bid. Additionally, the public works department has confirmed that the bidding requirements of the public work was followed and that the project proposal is fully funded within the ecology or quality grant loan and approved in the 2016 budget. So before I read the staff recommendation, we received information last week, within the bid documents, the American, the AIS, the American Iron and Steel provisions, a DB Eagle and Davis Bacon versus prevailing wage were not in the documents. The consultant missed it, the city missed it in their review and Department of Ecology missed it. It was thought that because this was a state grant, that those are all not a requirement. But because this was a federal pass-through, it missed everybody's eyes in the review. So we've confirmed with ecology that, because the next lowest bid is eight hundred ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars, that's a hundred and forty thousand dollars and change, that we're not required to go back out and rebid. So we're able to get, and we've received a bid from, for the additional from JMG, and we have two options at this point. Well, really on this one, we only have one option. Well, no, you have, you have two. You could either make a motion to approve the contract for the additional twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-six cents, which would mean that the motion would be to not exceed seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and nineteen cents. That would be the cleanest. Or that you would approve it for this amount, the mayor, under his change order authority, would issue a change order in that amount, given your approval, that allowing us to move forward with, in essence, because remember, we have a limit, I have a fifteen and the mayor has a twenty-five. We don't want to start this project with having to come back to the council for every single small change order. So quite honestly, ecology is fine with approving it at the amount, the amount in the 2016 budget is one point something million dollars. This is well within the funding. I think, actually, for the construction alone, we have eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in the approved budget. So I think it would be cleanest and then also allow the public works department to manage the construction under a normal process, if the motion could be including the additional money. So I'll read that motion, if that's okay. So staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute a contract with JMG Constructors LLC for the regional decant facility retrofit project in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and nineteen cents.
Additionally, we, the, each of these bids missed this twenty-seven thousand dollars, correct, Mr. Dorsey?
Yes, if we went back and rebid this.
Everybody, yeah, everybody would.
Everybody would have to add for Davis Bacon versus state prevailing, they would have to incorporate the American Iron and Steel component, and they would have to include the, the DBE disadvantaged business goal. So it's relative. And then, again, we verified with ecology that given the, the bid difference between the first and the second bid, that there was no reason to delay this project and rebid.
And also, from a budget standpoint, seventy-five percent of this project is grant-funded, the other twenty-five percent is a loan. Yes, Councilmember Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with JMG Construct, or yeah, Constructors LLC in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and nineteen cents for the regional decant facility retrofit project.
Motion is second, discussion?
I think, just.
Mr. Clausen?
One part that I very much appreciated, that even with this addition, we're still a hundred thousand dollars under the budgeted amount, so.
So we are going to be voting on a motion to execute a contract with JMG Constructors LLC for the regional decant facility project in amount not to exceed seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and nineteen cents, which includes that twenty-seven thousand we've discussed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. We get to get it done, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you.
We're on to item seven G, approval of the April nineteenth, 2016 council work study minutes.
Before we proceed, I was not at this meeting, but I did watch the tape and I would like to, I would be allowed to vote on this.
Is there a motion? Mr. Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes as published.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion of the council work study minutes? Seeing none, we'll be voting on the April nineteenth, 2016 council work study minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. We are back to our, we're to item seven H, which was the former consent item four G, approval of a contract with Correct Equipment, Inc. for the 2016 McCormick Woodstep conversions. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, your honor, council members. And again, this is, when you look at tonight's agenda, the public works department had seven contracts on this agenda. Even though we put a lot on the consent agenda, there's still a lot of work that goes into getting bids, getting staff reports. So there was an oversight on this that Councilwoman Ashby caught today, which was the contractor put eight point six percent tax in his bid and not eight point seven. So with that, a notice to bidders invitation bid was published in the Port Orchard Independent on March twenty-fifth, 2016, for the 2016 McCormick Woodstep system conversions. By the April fourth, 2016 bid deadline, the City of Port Orchard received three qualified bids for the sixty annual step system conversions as follows. Ron Hamley was at three seventy-two, five eighty-five, point five-six. Correct Equipment was at three forty-four, eight oh five. And Northwest Cascade was at six twenty-nine, three seventy-three, all with tax included. Upon review by public work staff, it was determined that Correct Equipment's bid of three forty-three, eight oh five, with, with tax included, was the lowest responsible bid for the sixty annual step conversion scheduled for 2016. And additionally, the public works has confirmed that the bid requirements for the public work was followed and that the project proposal was fully funded within the two, approved 2016 budget, which is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Correct Equipment for the 2016 McCormick Woodstep system conversion in an amount not to exceed, and again, this is where you have your option, you can either approve it for three forty-four, eight oh five, with the understanding that I will issue a change order tomorrow for three hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents to cover the eight point six to eight point seven difference, or you can just approve the contract tonight for three forty-five, one twenty-two, fifty, which is still much lower than the next lowest bid at three seventy-two, five eighty-five.
Your motion. Mr. Gertie?
I move to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Correct Equipment Incorporated for the 2016 McCormick Woodstep system conversions in the amount not to exceed three hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Dorsey, I think we're about the halfway point of this ten-year project, aren't we? These conversions? Seems like we are. This is year five?
Yeah, yes, we are.
And I know when we started this, the first two years, we had to have pump book meetings to convince people that this was a good thing to do. And now I believe we have a waiting list for people wanting to be converted. So this has been a huge success and I know when I drive by the entrance to McCormick Woods, it's very rare that I smell that horrible odor that we used to have out there, so.
Well, we, we don't have the service calls that we used to have either. It's just dropping tremendously.
And I noticed the pumpouts and services, which was on the consent agenda, it was much smaller than it's been in the past, so it's a good success, so.
So we still need to obviously rebuild McCormick Pump Station one and two, which is in our capital program, because all those years of hydrogen sulfide abuse has just, you know, eaten that up. And so the gum and the baling wire is probably about ready to run out, but we do have that in our capital plan, so.
Other questions? Seeing none, we'll be voting on the contract with Correct Equipment, Inc. for the 2016 McCormick Woodstep system conversions in amount not to exceed three forty-five, one twenty-two, fifty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. We are on to, looks like a report of council committees. Finance committee, Mr. Clausen?
Do you have a report? I have nothing to report, Mr. Mayor. This is the last one, other than we have a meeting scheduled for May twenty-four for seven thirty here.
Economic Development Tourism.
Yes, we met yesterday, as a matter of fact, at nine o'clock. Our discussion items included a welcome kit. We are putting together a welcome kit for new businesses for the city. It was presented, Mayor Patonso presented the draft of the welcome kit. We had a few edits to it and it's my understanding that a revised draft will be brought back to our work study next week.
And I'm actually, with your permission, I wanted to actually unveil it at the chamber meeting on Tuesday.
On Thursday?
And then I'll, we've made those edits and I thought it'd be neat to pass it out at the business networking opportunity that was there.
I think that would be fine. I don't know if West of Council wants to see it before it goes out.
Well, not necessarily before, but like to see it.
Could I send it electronically? How about if I send it out tomorrow electronically to everybody? And then I'll bring a hard copy to the, to the work study. This got sprung on us today, the chamber luncheon and what the format was, and I thought, wow, I should, I'd like to bring that welcome kit. Sorry, I interrupted you.
Yeah, no, what I was going to say is you could do that and then if, if any council member is really opposed to it, you could let it know before Thursday's luncheon. Then we talked about an ongoing item and that is the sidewalk right-of-way use downtown in that, again, we're having merchants, putting merchandise out. And we have been working with our city attorney on code language to address this issue in a policy. And that item, hopefully, we will have a draft soon and be back on our committee's agenda in June. We, the mayor attended the Kitsap Peninsula, well, it was a, it was a county meeting, I believe, regarding the Kitsap Peninsula's water trail system. And they are putting, and I bet we didn't bring our sample, but the Kitsap Water Peninsula Water Trail System is moving forward. It's a very strong program, it's a good program, and they're going to be putting signage up on the various take-in and put-out locations. And we will be putting up two signs, one at Waters, the boat launch.
At the boat launch.
And the other one was.
Marina Park.
The Marina Park. The Marina Park, okay. And we have a series of, I think there were six sites in the city that eventually we'll be getting signs, but those are the signs right now. We also then got an update from, um, yes?
Will we be getting a presentation on that program? It, I'd like to see it. It's pretty neat, actually, um, county and Pierce County-wide. It'd be neat to have a presentation.
Okay, we can do that.
We can, yeah, we can make that.
Probably won't be next week's work study, but the following month, how about that?
In no hurry, but it, it is neat to showcase.
And what, what came from that meeting, too, was the desire to form a similar committee for bicycle tourism.
Next, on our agenda, um, Community Development Director Bond gave us a report on the public hearing that the Planning Commission held on May third regarding our comprehensive plan. He reported that there were no pub, public comments at the hearing, and that the, we had received a letter from the Department of Fish and Wildlife requesting some revisions, and the Planning Commission voted to recommend, um, moving forward with the, uh, approval of the, the draft comprehensive plan. What we did discuss, discuss at, um, was the fact that there were no public comments, and we wanted to make sure and clarify with the community development staff that we had done appropriate outreach, um, so that everyone that, um, wanted to have an opportunity to come speak would have spoke at that time, and we were assured that there was, um, significant outreach done before that, uh, Planning Commission meeting. We then had an update on tax abatement, and we were provided with a draft, uh, property tax exemption code that we will be reviewing, and I believe that we hope to bring that back to the June work study.
And we're going to take it to the Land Use Committee next week for their, for them to take a look at it also.
For them to, for them to take a look at it, and then I'm assuming probably back to find, or Economic Development in June, or straight to the June twenty-first.
Either there, or the work, probably the works, right, straight to a work study.
Work study, okay. Then we had some non-agenda items, and I gave a report that we, I had a citizen take advantage of meeting with me, and, um, they, his, um, interest was holding multi-team athletic tournaments within the city, um, or within South Kitsap. Youth soccer tournaments, or softball tournaments, or, you know, that type of event, seeing that as a, uh, economic generator, and he had numbers that, that were interesting. And, uh, so I brought that idea forward at Economic Development, and I believe we're going to have some conversations with the county, because most of the fields within our area are county-owned. So anyway, it's a, it's a dialogue we're going to start, and I very much appreciated the citizen bringing it forward and taking advantage of calling me and meeting in person. The next thing that we talked about is that we suggested that policy guidelines, uh, should be developed for use of our waterfront parking lot, uh, by outside events, and, uh, we were moving forward with drafting a, a preliminary policy or guidelines for that, and we'll be bringing that back. Probably, we may go through land use and then work study on that. And other than that, um, the other thing that Mr. Bond let us know is that he's been working with the developer of McCormick Woods Phase Five, and that the developer is interested, um, in moving forward with the subarea plan for that area, and has expressed the need for that to be done sooner, and they would be willing to fund that. So those are conversations we're having. Did I depict that correctly, Mr. Bond?
We had the conversation. I don't think they were that forthcoming about all the details, but, um, we, we planted the seed.
Okay.
They haven't written a check yet.
Right, because I, okay, fine. But, but they're interested, they, they expressed some interest, and we welcomed their interest.
Correct.
And with that, we adjourned our meeting.
Okay, on to Utilities.
We have nothing new since the last time I reported. May sixteenth, however, at nine-thirty a.m. is our next meeting here at City Hall. Also, sewer advisory, the, the next meeting will be July twentieth at six-thirty, and that will be at the Squirt Building, the sewer building.
Okay, Land Use?
Land Use doesn't have a report. We gave a report, um, at the last meeting, and our next meeting is the third Wednesday, so that would be the eighteenth.
Tax, Mr. Chang?
Anything to report, but I believe we'll be forming the committee next.
Wonderful, okay. Chimes and lights, anything to report?
Uh, nothing new to report, but our next meeting is May sixteenth at three-thirty p.m. here at City Hall.
You're going to start weaving garland at that meeting?
Yes, we're going to be doing. Bring your pliers.
Work, work study session is next week, and, uh, we're on to the mayor's report, I believe, and, uh, a report on Myries. As you can see, there's activity going on down there, but much like Bethel, you need to manage your expectations. You know, we're getting some siding and some paint on it, and, uh, wish there was much more to report. And it's really only on two sides, the two visible sides, but, uh, uh, they're, they're down there working, and, uh, it'll look better, definitely better than it has, so, uh, I sit on the Health District Board, we're, the state kind of came to the rescue a bit with the, uh, the vaping, and, uh, passed some state laws. We're going to take it a step farther than what the Health District were, were working through. We're going to, we are proposing that we'll treat these just like cigarettes, other than the vaping lounges, which are covered under the state regulations, so, uh, probably see that, uh, happening in the next couple of months. So that was the direction we gave staff at the last meeting. And then the last item I have is, I hate to say it, but I think Mr. Chang might be right, round is probably better than square. There's, uh, some pictures there on the dais there I brought for you, so, um, I'm going to go ahead and order some of these in probably round without the eighteen ninety on it.
Yeah, I don't put that eighteen ninety.
This is a one-of-a-kind, uh, mock-up that I made with my scissors and Scotch tape.
Whoa.
So, it's, uh, special, and, uh, is there any desire for the council? That was my ask last time. You guys have some money in your budget for marketing-type items to have a few little help-ins. Beck's saying, no way, you're on your own. Cindy's, gee.
Scissor kit and a bunch of copies.
Okay, I'm, I'm just going to buy my own, and you can't have any then.
Okay, sweet, can we buy one from you?
I'll sell you one.
At cost, or?
Expensive, where are they going to be?
They're twenty cents more in, in, in the smaller quantity, but that's okay. I don't, I don't need a lot.
Do you know, if you can ask that they not have the back stamp on it?
You don't get to have an opinion now, because you're not buying.
I, I buy one for fifty cents.
They're mine.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on your, on Myries.
Yes.
Will the, um, the facelift, let's call it, will the facelift go to the second story?
Yes, the second story will remove that temporary construction, uh, thing that was on it, yes, for the last couple of years. It's half rotten. That goes away, and then it's lap siding on the second floor, and down below, it's, where the windows are.
Yes.
They'll, they'll leave the existing windows. On the front, there's two faux doors and a faux window and one real window, and so the, the faux doors and window, double doors, will be painted like a gloss black to make them, from the street, look like a door or a window. So the opening is framed in. When it gets a tenant, you know, they'll put real doors and windows in it, but, uh, so lap siding up top, and yes, the, the railing goes away up there, that temporary railing, and I'm, um, I, I know, I, I started with manage your expectations, so. All right, so, department heads, Mr. Dorsey?
Uh, yes, so, just to let you know, we did receive our official letter from the Department of Transportation for the three and a half million for the pathway project today. Five hundred thousand of that is in the two thousand and fifteen-seventeen biennium, so the plan is to, uh, get an ad-ready set of documents for segment three, which is from the Marley Apartment to the Bridge, uh, out this fall, so that we actually have bids in, in early January, and then start that work as soon as possible in seventeen. Also, just so that people don't think we're building the pathway this year, uh, the Bay Ford voluntary cleanup, the Cuisenberry cleanup is scheduled for just right after the Fourth of July, so you'll start seeing activity in there, um, removing the, the soils, uh, the soils that they didn't remove underneath our pathway project, segment four, last year. And then the last thing, I was trying my best to figure out how to work roosters and trees in tonight's comment period, but I couldn't think of anything, so with that all, in my com-
I was abused enough at Rotary today about roosters.
You got it.
Mr. Martin.
Is that a challenge?
Yes.
I just want to take, make a serious comment tonight and let the council know, everyone in all the departments in City Hall are very busy. There's a lot going on, everybody's got their nose to the grindstone, so to speak. Uh, I think you see the volume of, of material coming across your desk, and, uh, since I've been here now seven years, this is the, we're running at full steam, so everybody seems to be working and headed in the right direction, so thanks for your support.
Mr. Bond?
Yes, um, I have a couple of items. First of all, I had sent out an email earlier today, and you should have gotten the letter that is also on, uh, your desk. When the comprehensive plan for the county was, uh, the final draft was released on the twenty-ninth of April, uh, I spent my weekend, not too much of it, but I, I read through the comprehensive plan a little bit, and I stumbled upon a provision related to the county's concurrency and level of service standards for transportation, and it was concerning. Uh, on Monday, uh, when I got to the office, I called Victor Salman with TSI, who's been helping with our comprehensive plan and our transportation plan and impact fees, and he, uh, confirmed my suspicion, which was that the county's standard, though they've adopted a level of service standard D, and if you remember, it's an A, B, C, D, F, uh, type grade, um, they have done this on a segment level of service, and they've als, they adopted a level of service D, but they say that they will tolerate up to fifteen percent of lane miles in the county failing before they're going to trigger either a permit denial or require anybody to make improvements to the transportation network. And so, um, I brought this to the mayor's attention, and I talked to Councilmember Ashby about it, and we thought it would be prudent to provide a comment to the county on this, because it seems to be, uh, somewhat inconsistent with the intent of the state law, uh, to basically adopt the mandatory concurrency ordinance, uh, that's, that's supposed to require that permits be denied in the event that, uh, transportation systems fail, but then to carve out such a huge exemption that you'll never actually deny somebody's permit. Uh, and I think an example of this, if we had a project in the Port Orchard UGA, and let's say it was an enormous project and had a huge amount of trip generation, it may cause every road segment around that project to fail, but it may not tip the scales for the whole countywide system into failure, and so that project would be approved potentially without any mitigation unless that mitigation were sought under SEPA or through some other avenue. And so, um, we wanted to raise that issue with the county and provide that comment, and I have met with county staff and said, hey, we're concerned about this, and it seems like, uh, at some point, this is a political decision, and it's not, it's not that their concurrency ordinance is, is a new ordinance, it's an old ordinance. We had just never looked at it before, and they're now referencing it in their new comprehensive plan, and so, um, this is something that the county probably ought to be looking at, and, um, I'm not sure that it's been discussed in great detail on a countywide level previously. So, the letter that's before you, um, is a draft that I worked on with the attorneys and with Victor, our consultant, and we'd like to send it. The public comment is due this week, because they're having their public hearings, and so if this is acceptable to the council members, I can go ahead and send this. If you'd like to sign it, I can put your names on it, or I can send it on your behalf, and I'll insert some language that says, this has been prepared on behalf of the council and was discussed tonight, and has your blessing.
Mr. Clausen?
Mayor, I think this is a, an excellent catch. Thank you, Nick. And when I looked at it and thought about it, I mean, to have a project, a major project next to our city, not raising to the level because they're not concerned about it impacting the roads and sea beck, doesn't seem quite right. So, I think this is a wonderful catch. I think it needs to be sent. I think it might be better to have your signature on it than Nick's.
Okay.
Um, just to raise it up, as you mentioned, it's in the political world now, so have the mayor send it as a concern of all of ours.
Mr. Mayor, I...
Yes?
Um, I, too, I appreciate the letter. I very much appreciate, um, your catching that, actually reading the document and, and finding it, but I would like to, with council's permission, send this to, um, other jurisdictions within the county. I'm thinking particularly our KRCC, um, partner jurisdictions, so that they're aware of it to give somebody, you know, um, they may have not noticed it as, as we had not for several years.
Good idea.
Okay. So we CC then, our neighboring cities, the, the other cities and, and the port?
And the port, yes, and I would even, although Bremerton's not a member of KRCC, I believe, I would include Bremerton.
Yes, Mr. Deaner?
And I'd just like to add, I think time is of the essence, especially with a comp plan, and, um, the last thing I think the county wants is an appeal hanging over their head on this, so if they can do what they can to address the issue quickly, I think they would appreciate that opportunity.
Yeah, this letter's planned to go out tomorrow.
Okay.
Just wanted everybody to see it before we send it out the door.
And I'd like to also note that that was a good catch, as well.
Are we going to hand-deliver it, or are we going to put it in the mail?
I, I was planning on just emailing it tomorrow morning to Dave, and I can send it to the others, but I'll have the mayor sign it and get it scanned, uh, this evening if he's available.
I will make myself available.
Okay.
Okay.
If that's all on that issue, I have two other comments. You should, uh, you should have already received information on the draft comprehensive plan that's on the website. We are providing you a clean, hard copy that has a handful of revisions that we've caught. Um, we're going to have a discussion on that at work study next week, and so between now and then, if you haven't done so already, um, you probably want to study up on that in advance of our work study discussion, and then we're, we're planning on the public hearing being June fourteenth with, uh, possible adoption thereafter unless there's some significant change that is required at that time. And then finally, uh, also on work study, uh, the work study agenda next week, we will have a further discussion on McCormick Woods, or McCormick Village Park, uh, and the opportunity for a spray park versus more of a passive water feature, dog park, uh, those improvements we discussed at last month's, uh, work study session, and so, um, we'll, I'll need some direction from you as a result of, uh, next Tuesday's meeting, so that I can, uh, give the consultant marching orders.
Did you get a cost estimate on that parking lot, too? I know we've got a drawing for it.
Um, I don't have a cost estimate on it, um, but I, I do have estimates on what it's going to take to design anything that is extra, which the parking lot is not within the initial scope, and so that would be an add-on to the existing contract for design plus construction, um, but I'm going to bring all of the information that I have, uh, it'll be in the staff report.
I'm meeting with the fire chief tomorrow, but in my phone conversation with him, he seemed receptive to the idea of us use, you know, obviously, we're going to grade his site off for him, he's getting some benefit, and in, in return, we get to use the, the site for park, additional parking until they're ready to build a fire station.
Mayor?
Yes?
In addition, uh, Nick, uh, the Development Regulations Advisory Ad-Hoc Committee is May seventeenth.
Correct.
Three o'clock here at City Hall.
Yes.
Just an announcement.
Any others? Mr. Bond? Okay, Sharon?
Uh, just following on the, uh, the theme of May seventeenth, uh, because of the items on the work study session agenda, uh, Sarah Springer will be attending instead of me.
Yep, and Clerk Reinsen?
Since everybody's talking about the work study session, just a reminder that Brianna Murray will be here to give you a legislative update. Um, and then because of the, uh, agendas being pretty heavy, uh, for the work study session, and I believe the committee meetings are being well-stocked with items, um, I do have the Key Bank National Association Parking Lot Lease up for renewal. Um, this is their, uh, they have the right to exercise their third renewal option, which will, um, expire at the end of September, um, but they are asking the city to look into this and hopefully allow them to exer, exercise their third option renewal, which will be from October first, two thousand and sixteen, to September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, and wanted to get consensus from the council if we can just move forward with the same contract, just five years longer, um, or if you do want to bring this to a committee.
It's the parking spaces behind the bank that run along at a Turner Park. It's, there's a sliver of- It's, there's a sliver of land right there. It's, we have an existing lease, and we have a renewal option within it. If we deviated from that renewal, we'd be in the same boat as we were with the Ford lease, where we have to go out and have an appraisal done, so I'm highly.
A full renewal negotiation of a new contract.
If we don't want that land, which I don't think we do, that we continue with this agreement that we have in place.
I'm all for just extending it, letting them exercise their option.
Is that the consensus? Wonderful.
It's not any of the parking in the actual shopping center, it's just the parking along Etta Turner?
It's the back, there's actually, I think, it's the driveway there behind the bank, and that was parking stalls in the back there, is my understanding.
Hey, park.
Thing, yeah.
Okay.
On the one street. Anything else? Brandy?
That's it.
I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Martin's comment there, on how busy it is here at City Hall, and we really need to pat our employees on the back. We currently have six job openings, so we're getting everything, you know, everything done for us with a number of job openings right now, so I think, and only two of those positions are new positions. We've got the GIS tech and the IT support, but we have four existing positions that are currently opening, open, and we're in process of hiring. Water system coordinator, a planner, the planning support, and a court clerk, so. Human Resources is quite busy, and every, just about every department is running short staff, so. With that, we will go to the second citizens' comment period. Does anybody wish to comment this evening? Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
I've been trying to make as many committee meetings as I can, and is there a way that we can get, not the whole package, I know the council gets a committee package the week before a committee meeting, for some of them, apparently. Just the agenda, not all the peripheral stuff. It's great that we get it at finance, I appreciate that, but, you know, just so I could go online, or somebody could go online and look and see what's, what the talking points are going to be, that's all, just the basics. I wouldn't think that it would be that tough for some of the more important meetings. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Bobby? You want to talk about last Friday?
Am I allowed thank yous at this time?
You betcha.
We don't charge a dollar, Bobby.
I have three thank yous. One for a mayor for working so hard with Monsur Sanapur on Myries. For me to look at the progress is quite a bit, actually, compared to what it was. Second thank you is for that beautiful picket fence along Bay Street in front of your, where the Spanish restaurant was. Thank you so much for that. It just improves that area, and hope to see more back inside there.
We'll get the construction fencing down soon, and some gravel down, but it's a start.
And third, thank you, everyone who was able to come down to Ladies Night Out. It was the most ladies I have seen in our town. We gave out eight hundred little gift bags in an hour and a half, ran out of them, which means now we need to go for a thousand, which is awfully hard, but we will. And it seemed like everyone was quite happy with the event, and the public market was absolutely packed. And we did accomplish to get Debbie Macumber and the Tea House to join the Bay Street Association. It only took me six years to do that, and she, they came down, and it was just lines of ladies to, you know, to, they were giving away Debbie's books, and so thank you, everyone. It seemed like a success, and we have another one coming up in October. Hope to see you there.
Thank you, Bobby. And Bobby, you need a thank you for all the hard work you do with this Merchants Association. Well, thank you. Jerry, do you have a comment for us tonight? Tonight, Mr. showers, you're the only one left.
No, just thank you guys for honoring our, and when we have a service ceremony, we'll be sure that we do.
Thank you. I think with that, the meeting's adjourned.